So, I think we start first with our acceptance of our agenda. Can I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we move speedily to the superintendent's report tonight, which has a number of weighty financial items, so we look forward to that.
It does. Good evening. To begin, I have a few general updates before we turn things over to Beverly, who is going to speak on three important financial-related topics. But I do want to begin by addressing the campus safety alert that we sent out yesterday. Certainly was a difficult day across the school community. On late Sunday night, quite honestly, around midnight, we received word from our partners at the police department that a nonspecific threat was reportedly made by a middle-school student. Through our collaboration, we made a number of efforts, first to ensure the safety of our students and staff, and then with the support of the police department, investigated the situation. The department determined that no credible threat was present, which certainly was pleasing. We are continuing to locally investigate the matter and will address it accordingly. But I want to certainly thank our students, faculty, and parents for their wonderful approach to yesterday, folks for understanding and supportive and appreciative of the measures that we are taking. I also want to acknowledge Mr. Sotile for handling the situation certainly like a pro. At the end of the day, he spoke of all students there working through today and having conversations in smaller groups. And today certainly was a much calmer, more focused day. So we thank everybody for their understanding and support yesterday. I also want to thank the cast, crew, and faculty advisors for the fall musical, Babes in Arms. Having had the pleasure of attending opening night on Friday, I certainly saw their talents come to life in that excellent production and certainly extend our appreciation and congratulations to everyone involved. I also want to acknowledge our Model UN team that traveled to Fairfield University for an academic conference, and they did a wonderful job. Topics that were being debated at this particular conference were global warming, child trafficking, and the Ukrainian crisis. We had a number of students that were acknowledged for their work individually, kids that were acknowledged for best delegates as well as honorable mention delegates, so we're certainly pleased with their success as they represented our community and district proudly. Tomorrow night, Dr. Core, Ms. Chapnick, Mr. Lichtenwalner, and Ms. Benedetto will host an elementary curriculum night at 7:00 PM at Main Street School. It'll be an opportunity for parents to learn a little bit more about where we are with our curriculum development at the elementary level and to also, we walked through a revised elementary report card, so we hope folks will be able to enjoy, join us then. And finally, looking towards Friday, we want to plug the PTSA Harlem Wizards game. I think the staff team is going to give them a run for their money this year, so we hope you're able to come out and have a good night and support our schools in the PTSA. This evening, we've asked Beverly to speak to three different important topics. The first is some bond refinancing that we'd like the board to consider. Second is looking at funding related to our bond that was approved on October 7th. And then finally, an overview of the property tax freeze credit that was a part of legislation that was enacted last year in New York State. So Beverly?
Okay.
So you want to begin with the bond refinancing?
Sure. Just take a quick pause, let John settle in, because I know John is going to be interested in the bond refinancing.
I love bond refinancing.
Yes.
That would be better.
Just walk.
Go ahead, I can listen.
You can listen and disrobe.
Beverly, on that note?
Okay.
I censor my response to that.
Interesting choice, or?
Do you recall about a year ago, we did a bond refunding, and we're now pursuing a second one? We currently have the largest debt that we have on our books right now, which was for the building of this building. Currently, the interest rates are anywhere from 4.5% to 5%, and because the interest rates have come down, our fiscal advisors are recommending, again, that we refinance it. It does not extend the debt, it's over the same period as the current debt, but it would just be at a lower interest rate, just like if you were doing a refinancing of a home equity loan. With that interest rate being lowered, our fiscal advisors are estimating that we can save over $5 million over the remaining life of this debt. That would have an estimated savings in the 15-16-year budget of about $280,000. And also, I think it's good timing because besides saving us money in the budget, we can also, I'm hoping, use this plan to, as an efficiency, towards reaching the goal of the property tax freeze credit, which I will go into in a minute, because there are certain criteria that the school district has to meet in order for our homeowners to be eligible for that credit.
That's good news.
And the number you talked about savings, is that netted the cost of placing the bond?
Yes.
That cost comes out, I guess they float a little bit larger amount in order to pay the underwriter and the consultant, right? What, do we have any process in place to evaluate the, I've forgotten the name of our bond consultant, but?
Fiscal advisor.
Fiscal advisor. Do we have any process in place?
It's New York Municipal.
Right, right. To monitor, to evaluate how they're doing their job? Because I know the last bond, they were, they came up with, they put the thing out for bid, or whatever, and they had about, they had three or four bids, and came back with, and based on the bids, chose the lowest cost, but the underwriters aren't committing to the particular rate that they're bidding. They're saying they think they can get that, you know? So, did we ever have any way of going back and seeing where the underwriters actually? And I talked to the fiscal advisor, and they said, "Oh, we hold their feet to the fire." Do we have any way to evaluate whether they actually did?
Well, it would.
Hold their feet to the fire?
Well, as far as that, the final payments that you make on a semi-annual basis, you could compare that to what the bid opening was in the evaluation, and it came right out to what the bid was.
Okay, okay, that's good. The last time around?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good. That was, I think, that sounds like the missing piece, yeah? But I don't, I don't think we were ever told that, yeah?
Okay. There's another item, right?
Okay. The next item is just a talking point, and it's also, by the way, that bond refunding, we're hoping to have on the board agenda for December 2nd, for your approval. The borrowings for the capital projects, which will hopefully begin next summer, pending SED approval, first, we're going to go out with a ban, a bond anticipation note, and we're planning on going out for the full amount of the borrowing, max, as what the voters approved. You can do a ban for up to two years for capital projects, and then you would go out to bond it. And that's two years past the completion of the project, so it's really a little bit longer than two years. And then we would go out and we would bond the actual amount that we needed to finance. So if we're lucky and we did not use all of the allowable funds that the voters told us we could use, then we would not finance it, because it, number one, it doesn't behoove us to be paying extra interest, and number two is you wouldn't get any state aid on it. So you only borrow exactly how much you need. Actually, the, I'm anticipating that the bonded debt will be much lower, because the first year's payment, which I told you I would build into the budget for 15-16, because it's replacing debt, the bonds would not be set at that point, so I would just lower the ban by that amount.
Bonds would not be set at that point, that much I understand.
Right, so then.
The second part of that clause.
So if I borrowed, if I went out with a ban for $5 million, I may actually bond $4.5 million, because the first payment would be just a reduction in the ban going forward, because I'm going to take it out of the 15-16 budget. So our fiscal advisors, sorry, I'm losing my voice. Our fiscal advisors are recommending to put that on the December 15th agenda, so that they can have that resolution in place.
For the ban?
For the ban. We will not borrow for a couple of months, but in order to get the paperwork going, because there's quite a bit of paperwork that goes with these, because I don't want to borrow too far in advance, because then I'm paying more interest on it. But we would be borrowing before June 30th.
The interest rates on the ban, how do they compare to the interest rates on the bond?
The bond, they're a little bit more fluid. Usually, they're a little bit lower, because they're not as long, whereas a bond can go out 30 years, 15 years, 20 years, so you're projecting a lot of times a higher interest rate, gambling on cost of living increases, et cetera. Whereas a ban of one or two years, you're getting the lower interest rates, which are more current.
Anybody have any questions on the ban to bond financing?
Okay.
Well, I think the, seems to me, the decision point is, the only reason to do it a different way would be if we thought interest rates, and we somehow thought enough of ourselves to think that we could predict this, to, we thought interest rates were going up, right? Bond yields were going up. So that we would make, we would be better off issuing that bond earlier rather than later.
True, but then if you weren't using all of that funding, now you're paying interest on money that you will not get state aid on, and you're paying interest on funds that would have to be used immediately to pay off debt service.
Right, right, that's right.
Yeah, I guess the ban, we sort of treat like a construction loan, right? You're only paying interest on the money that you draw.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the, that's the, that plus, you know, but so there's two, there's that issue, right? Of course, we could, we could pick a lower amount that we're pretty confident we're going to use and bond that, and then bond the rest later.
You could, but bond closing costs are quite expensive.
Right, well, right.
Usually, each time we go out with a bond, it's anywhere between $5,000, $7,000, $8,000.
Right, although that's a drop in the bucket compared to the cost we're talking about, right?
Right, but that comes right out of your general fund money, that cannot be financed.
Right, but still, you know, it all gets financed from the same source eventually, but.
The recommendation from our advisors, which you agree with, is to go with the ban.
Correct.
Two years, until we know the exact amount, and then we would bond it. Any objections to that?
Makes sense.
No, it's not, I don't think it's unreasonable. I think that, but that's the trade, the trade-off is what I, I think what I just described.
Right.
So that will appear on the December 15th agenda, okay?
Yep.
Property tax freeze credit, as you were aware, this year, the property tax freeze, the only thing that happened was school districts had to stay below the tax cap, and then homeowners received a check. Hopefully, you all received a check, I don't know. It has nothing to do with star.
I'd remember a check.
I didn't get a check.
Well, it depends on.
I think board members are specifically omitted.
Conflict of interest. Encourage them to keep the budget down.
It depended on how much your taxes went up as compared to the CPI. So if you stayed below the tax cap and yours didn't go up more than 1.46%, plus the rounding or whatever, then you would not have gotten one. But most people in New York State did get a small one. Personally, I got a whopping big check for $57.
Well done.
But anyway, school districts this year only had to keep below the tax cap. Starting next year, it's now twofold.
God bless you.
You have, the school district has to keep below the tax cap and show a 1% savings over this year's tax levy. So this year's tax levy, 1% of it, is approximately $498,000. So we have to have that reflected as a savings over the next three years, and to prove that that savings would hold over those years. To that end, I've contacted the State Education Department and the Division of Budget, and they have not gotten back to me yet, because even though this freeze credit was enacted by the legislature, they really haven't come down with all of the criteria yet. They're still working on it. So I asked them about the refunding, and they said that it probably would be one of the cost efficiencies that would be acceptable, but they haven't come out with it officially yet. So, and you can go back to the first year that the tax cap was enacted, so that would be like 12, 13 years. Therefore, I could use the bond refunding that we did a year ago, I could use this current refunding, and I'm looking at some other avenues that we've already done in the past, plus maybe in the future, to get to that $498,000.
So in other words, we have a realistic shot, or a fighting chance, if, if they accept the idea of the refinancing as a reasonable effort to save money, that?
Right.
With the other things, we would have an opportunity.
Right. You have to prove the cost efficiencies, saving money, or other ways are through consolidated contracts, but you can only show the savings. Or school, and they're encouraging, like, school district mergers, which we're not going to do, or municipal contracts overall. They're also encouraging going through BOSIs, you know, cooperative agreements through BOSIs for services, et cetera. So they should be forthcoming with more detail. The actual efficiency plan has to be submitted to the Division of Budget before the end of June, so they still have time to come out with all of the technicalities of the plan.
Thus far, they've outlined some examples of types of savings and types of partnerships that school districts and municipalities could hold to recognize these savings. But really, what we're waiting to see is what those particular standards we have to adhere to would be before we can actually begin to sit down with either the village or surrounding school districts to see where we can find additional savings or efficiencies. Some of the other benefits that we can, we're going to investigate as well would include possibly some moves that we made with transportation in the last year.
Right.
Where we brought in, we expanded our partnership within the Quad Villages for our out-of-district transportation services, and in the process, we realized some savings there. So it's one of those things that we may begin to nickel and dime to get there, but we'll do whatever we have to, and as soon as we have those standards released by the state, our surrounding school districts are ready to sit down. I've already had some initial conversations with the village to explore some possibilities, but we have to wait for those, those details. And politically, everybody was waiting until after the election, is what we were told, before that would be released, so we're now in a holding pattern, really.
Okay. Nice question. How does this work multi-year? Like, say, we find some efficiencies, do we only get the credit for it next year? Or is it, like, how would they measure that two years from now?
Well, they would measure it because, for example, a bond refunding, if you're saving $200,000 in interest one year, you're saving 200 the next year and the next year.
Okay, right, right.
So that would carry forward.
So, so like, if we merge and we save it, they would, they would compare it not to the prior year, but to the year before the merger?
To the base year, which was 14-15.
Okay.
It doesn't have to accumulate.
So, yeah, as long as it's a lasting savings, it doesn't have to keep getting bigger.
Correct, right. It doesn't have to get bigger.
Right.
Okay.
So that's a brief overview.
So, and, and it doesn't say that we have to reduce the tax levy by this amount, right?
No, absolutely not.
It just says you have to be more efficient. In some sense, you can still spend the same amount of money, you just have to be.
But we have to stay under the cap.
You have to stay under the cap.
You have to be more efficient, so in some sense, you're spending the same amount of money for more somehow, because you're being, you've realized inefficiencies somewhere. Like if we spent the same, we got all these benefits on bond refinancing, but we still spent the same amount of money, we were, we would essentially be taking the money we're saving on bond financing and doing something else with it that's more valuable than paying on interest. That's the idea, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Not sure that's a good idea, but it's an idea.
Thank you, Beth. All right, well, I think that concludes our superintendent's report and brings us to our presentation. I hope our three community members appreciate the fact that we moved the presentation up in, in the order of things, so that you would be able to enjoy the presentation instead of listening to it at 10:30 at night, so you get to hear it at 7:55. So Reina, over to you to tell us about the tri-state visit here to review our world language program.
So, good evening, everyone. I know many people have been anxiously awaiting this report.
The anxiety was too much for most of them.
Many more than last week.
Tanya's so excited she's moving to the front row.
This is an infinitely large, larger number of people in the audience than we normally get, though.
By three. So tonight.
Stuck by an infinite percent.
Tonight, I'm going to share a little bit about the World Language Tri-State's report and some of the next steps. I also think that it'll be an opportunity for me to maybe clarify some of the pieces that are in the report, as well as the purpose of the Tri-State's consortium and what they do when they visit a school district. So, World Language was our fourth tri-state review process, and for those of you, I think everybody knows, but Tri-State is an organization that works within our region, Jersey, Connecticut, and New York. I would say a good many schools, all the school districts that are similar to Irvington are participants in the tri-state review process and the consortium. Tri-State comes in every three years or so, and they provide a service of giving you a, providing you a review of a curriculum area that you request. The tri-state review can be whatever your district is working on, would like some feedback on, has some interest in learning more from an outside perspective. They do not come back with a report that tells you what to do. They do not come back with any judgment. They collect evidence over a series of three days, and from that evidence, they create a report. Tonight, I'm going to share with you the report, the highlights of the report, the commendations that they made, the recommendations, and as a result, where we are as a 612 World Language program. Just to be clear, their role was not to come in and comment on whether we should have language at the earlier grades. Their role is not to come in and say, "Tell us what to do." They basically say, "Here's what we saw, here's what we heard, and now we're presenting that evidence to you, and as a school district, you decide how to take that work forward." Over the course of the three days, they not only reviewed samples of student work, teacher work, but they also interviewed a tremendous number of people in our district. And I would say, we, because of World Language and all of the work we've done around, or the conversations we've had around the World Language, they met with over, I would say, at least 40 parents, at least 50 students, and all of the World Language teachers, all of the administrators, including me, including Dr. Harrison. All of that is the evidence that they're collecting. So it's not, when we say evidence, we're not talking about simply pieces of paper, we're talking about through conversations and through examples of student work. That is all considered evidence. So, the Tri-State's review took place in March. The Tri-State review team is generally made up, the majority of the visitors are, have some expertise in the subject area, but not, not everybody does. So the 16 educators are from the Tri-State area, a substantial number of them were World Language educators, and they purposely try to do that, because they really want people who have that angle, that focus, that expertise, to be looking at the work. The Tri-State review process is based on eight indicators, and this has been reduced in number over the years, and this is the evidence that they are looking for through these particular lenses. So again, it's a limitation, because these are the indicators for Tri-State. So does it mean that they look at every single thing that we might look at? Well, no, not necessarily. So again, this is a starting point for a conversation, it does not include everything. In each of these indicators, what they're looking for, in the first two, those are the most classroom-based of the eight indicators. So when they look at the work that we're doing in our classrooms, they're looking to see how, what level of performance-based assessment do our teachers include in their practice and their curriculum and instruction? And how much higher-level thinking do they expect students to engage in and demonstrate through metacognition? They look at our performance data, but, you know, our performance data in World Language, and that really, for number three, they're looking at standardized assessment. So I'll talk a little bit about how World Language assessments are not standardized, there is no regions. We use a checkpoint system in New York State, and those are basically created by districts. So I'm not so sure that unlike a global history where this, across the state, every student is taking the same assessment or an AP exam, the checkpoint is somewhat district-driven. The curriculum instruction, they look for alignment, they want to understand how cohesive, coherent, and how well-aligned is our curriculum? What sort of professional learning does Irvington offer to their teachers, and what professional learning do our teachers take advantage of? Equity, so what types of opportunities, are we sure to provide opportunity for all students? That this isn't only that we're looking at one type of student, but that we really have a more of an open policy to providing equity and opportunity for students? Common vision, do we have a shared vision as a school district, as a community? And so that's probably where they get the most feedback on, from the interviews, because that's the one time where they actually get to speak to our parents and our students, where I think that they look to see, what's the alignment? Are they saying and thinking the same thing? And then also, aligned to that are parents and community, so what's the role of parents and community in our school district? So this is just a quick, it's not really quick, it's a little dense, I, just for people who are reading this actually, more than anything else, just an understanding of how the model works and what the point is, which I think I've basically explained in the rest line. So when a Tri-State's visit is going to occur, the Tri-State's consortium asks us to give them, what are our questions? What are we looking for? What do we want to know about? So when we met with one of the representatives from Tri-State, as well as all of the 612 building administrators and all of the 612 teachers, we talked about what, what do we want evidence of? What are we asking for? What do we want to know about our program? So again, this is not where we would ask them to, we wouldn't ask them questions about something outside the scope, so I'll give an example. We wouldn't ask them, "Do they think we should have World Language in fifth grade?" Because that's not the scope of their work. But the feedback that they give us can inform those decisions and those next steps. So as you can see, to what extent is the World Language 612 curriculum effectively sequenced and articulated? So this visit coincided with our launching of Rubicon Atlas and Curriculum Mapping. So this actually, the question was developed prior to our launch of that, so you'll see there's lots of parallels. That's a good thing, it means that as a district, we're working towards a common set of goals and expectations. So we wanted feedback on how aligned do they see our, our curriculum? Do they see that? Do they see that eighth-grade Spanish has alignment to ninth grade? Do they see a continuum? Do they see that our students are on some sort of a path that's designed, that's planned for, versus going, spending a year in a classroom where you could have great instruction, but is it working toward the next step, the next level, or those end goals? To what extent does the World Language program balance age-appropriate skill development, the acquisition of content, and higher-level thinking? So this question was really about the, what, how much skill work are we doing? Are we pushing our students to really work at higher levels? And that can include speaking, writing, reading, that's not, that's not specific in any one area, but how thoughtful are we in our plan for moving our students to get ultimately to the higher levels? And I'll also talk a little bit about that as we move forward. To what extent does our program support the development of a set of skills and dispositions that encourages students to use the language in advanced or authentic experiences? This one problem, this question most relates when we developed it, and it's funny, in reading them, you know, I've sat in the room, you know, so I was there for the questions, but when I read them and I think, I wonder how well someone understands them if they weren't sitting there. So that third question speaks mostly to speaking, actually. So what we find is that our students, most students are reluctant speakers. They're least comfortable, they generally get the least amount of time, especially in secondary models where teachers tend to do a lot of the talking and students do less of the talking. So this question really was specific in our thinking to saying, how much, what are the authentic experiences? How often are our students engaging with other speakers from around the world, not just within our own classrooms or classroom to classroom, but where's the exposure? Where's the experience? And what makes the experience for our students authentic in the language that they're working to develop? So those were the three questions that Tri-State's was, were presented with on the opening day, and then over the three days, they began to collect evidence of what they saw related to these three questions. So I'm going to just take us through it, I'm not going to read these, I'm hoping that I can summarize, but I'm obviously also happy to answer your questions. Again, I don't know if we want to just go through, it might help for you to hear all the, see all eight, because they overlap and they have a relationship to each other. So, in looking at the first, in performance-based indicators, I think one of the things that we took away when the department and all of the secondary administrators looked at this, they started out by giving us our commendations, and each, they go through the same pattern. The first slide will be the commendations, what they saw, and then the second slide will be the recommendations. The interesting thing from, and this is my personal takeaway from going on visits and also having, being a part of the fourth visit here in Irvington, very often the commendations speak to individual experiences that they saw. So they might have seen this in a classroom, so I remember with ELA, we walked away saying, "Tri-State saw pockets of good instruction," and it really was good instruction. And so very often, the commendations can reflect some more isolated things. The recommendations tend to be a little bit more systemic. They take, they take more of the collective evidence, and their recommendations seem to say, "Here's kind of what we saw across, and that's why we're suggesting this." Because if it were only this big, it probably wouldn't be worth a suggestion or a recommendation. So they're looking for the bigger ideas behind it. So certainly in our classrooms, they saw pockets of good instruction, I'll use the second bullet, provide varied curriculum materials that offer students creative, purposeful, performance-based tasks. So they saw some good instruction in our classrooms. But what the recommendations speak to is the broader picture, and remember, they're always connecting it back to our questions. So for me, when I go through the recommendations, the takeaway for me is the whole idea around collaboration. So consider developing a collaborative process, collaborate to review. So the systemic takeaway, when I think that they, that they're providing us with is, we have a lot of individually good classrooms of, where good instruction is going on. We have many strong World Language teachers, and I think our evidence of that is, we have amazing participation in our World Language program. We really do. I mean, we have, we maintain students through multiple years of language beyond where they have to go. As we all know, our Latin program is very strong, we have a lot of pressure, and our Greek program as well. So we, that counts for something in terms of, we have evidence that we have been providing a good program and opportunities for our students. So when we, I always am cautious that this is not about being a deficit model, it's not about what's not working, but how do we grow and how do we make our program stronger? And where do we see places where that can happen? Clearly, over the years, I think our World Language department has sort of lived a divided world. I think we've had very strong interest in building our French program over the years. We've certainly seen evidence of that here in this room, and I think that some of what they saw was that we need to be more collaborative in our work, in our expectations, and in our vision building. So, in looking at the performance-based assessment, the second bullet that they recommend is about looking at student work. So how often are our departments, are our World Language teachers, sitting together and really looking at what our students are doing, what we're asking our students to do, and saying, "Is this what we want? Is this the measure of success that we think is appropriate and at working at a level? Do we have the level of rigor? Is it really a performance-based assessment, or is it simply an assessment?" So when I say that, are we asking students to apply both the skills, the content, and the higher-order thinking in those higher-level assessments? And again, I'll speak to the speaking part. How often are our students really being challenged to speak in the target language? So for performance-based assessment, they definitely, you can see that they recommended that more alignment, more collective work, and more, a common understanding. Student metacognition, so for the commendations, you'll see that there are examples, and this is why when I shared like that idea of pockets of good instruction versus systemic recommendations, there are examples of opportunities for students to self-reflect. If they had seen it across in all of our classrooms, that's what that would say. It would say that we see across your district, across your classes, we see that. So they're acknowledging that they're seeing it, which means that we have models of it where we could be learning from each other and working together, but they didn't see it as part and parcel of our entire program. Again, they see various strategies, and ultimately, this, the third bullet, create opportunities for students to reflect on how their skills can inform their own learning. So again, moving to that higher level. So as a result of what they saw in their evidence, here's what they're recommending for our, for metacognition. You know, to me, the key takeaway from their recommendations was higher-level thinking. Where are we really asking students to do the higher-level work? And the other part was higher expectations and higher-level thinking. So ensuring that our program is rigorous. So when I read the recommendations from them, I, my takeaway, and I think the department's takeaway, is how do we make our program more rigorous and include more thinking in the expectations?
I think, just ask a clarifying question now, rather than wait. What do you mean, in languages, what do you mean by higher-level thinking? What's a, you know...
It's the application of it. So it's asking students to take, if it, whether it be something that they read, or whether they're asking the students to speak, it's where they're taking their skills, and like in any other course, they're actually applying it in some content. So it could be that they're reading higher-level content, and they actually have to do some sort of synthesis of an idea. So it's not only giving back the knowledge, the knowledge and skill, where we want, obviously we want students to demonstrate that. The reality is that most of our students will leave here, and even if they are proficient, most of them will not write in the language, but I think we would love for our students to at least speak in the language. So asking kids to synthesize and then actually also apply their language is asking them to use higher-level thinking skills. It's not rote, it's not just basic knowledge.
So it, is it, are you just really saying you want to teach kids how to speak in the language? Because, first of all, that doesn't apply to the classics, right, in the same way?
No, I'm saying that they're taking their knowledge...
We're talking about Spanish and French, then.
They're taking their knowledge, and they're taking their skill, and they're applying it to another setting. So in other words, I'm reading this in Spanish, and I'm reading this in Spanish, and I'm drawing a conclusion about what I've read. I'm actually applying, I'm using the target language to deepen my understanding, and then applying it, the same way that in an English classroom, I would expect students to apply what they're learning. We wouldn't give an English test where students only give back the information that I gave them.
Right. I guess it's another question, really, outside of this exercise, about whether that's a desirable goal for language instruction, but, yeah, okay.
So, the third indicator is around student performance data, and they do look at standardized data for this. This is not an area where they're looking at necessarily classroom assessment, they're looking at standardized. So the complex piece here for us is that, as I said, there really are no standardized tests that we give, except for AP. So checkpoint A and checkpoint B, so checkpoint A is the first level of proficiency, and then moving to checkpoint B. We worked as part of, with a group of other school districts, when New York State eliminated the regions, we worked collaboratively with other districts to define our, and develop our checkpoint A and B assessments. So again, doesn't necessarily benchmark us in any way across the state as another type of test would. So the recommendations here, I think that the interesting thing was, as I, as I read through this data, for me, it said, "Well, what are our goals?" That was really my takeaway question. So consider engaging World Language teachers in identifying the questions that are important to them and generating data that would be helpful. So for me, that's the goals. How are we looking at what we're doing and saying, is what we're doing, it's really what you just said, John, is what we're doing getting us to our long-term goals for language? Or what do we want a, and I'll say a junior or a senior who feels that they are at the end of their language program here in Irvington? What is that? What does that look like? And so I, what my takeaway on this was that, what does our data tell us? And how does it inform our thinking? But again, you know, for me, this standard, this indicator is, is the least helpful in that we're not basing it really on any sets of standardized data. So it's a good recommendation, but it's a recommendation that could have applied anywhere within the report. So for curriculum instruction, the, clearly, they spoke to, that they saw, again, samples, pieces, but I'm going to move to the recommendations. They didn't see alignment, they did not, they did believe that we need to be curriculum mapping, which is exactly what we are doing. They also pushed us to consider the second bullet, a systematic process of collecting, sharing, and comparing data. Again, that's the collaboration piece. So, you know, when you walk away from a Tri-State report, what you really walk away with is a big picture. And the big picture, as I think is unfolding, is that we're not, we're not collaborative enough, we're not articulated enough, and we don't have a long-term plan for languages. We have daily classroom instruction, but not, there's anything to go there yet, but not necessarily the bigger picture. So Rubicon Atlas curriculum mapping, that's a process that we've started, and they've also suggested that maybe our units of study are not consistently aligned to ACTIVL, so on the national standards. So they are suggesting that we go back and we look at the standards, and we consider how aligned is everyone aligning to some set of, common set of standards. For professional learning, they can see that there is professional learning that is, that takes place in district, that our teachers do have the opportunity to work together and develop curriculum. I think what you'll see is, again, the word systemic, so the learning process, teachers and students providing time and resources to ensure professional learning is language-specific. So I would definitely say that that's feedback that we've gotten from the language department collectively, that they feel the professional learning, while we've provided professional learning, certainly around Rubicon and curriculum mapping, and over the years, they've had some support in developing curriculum with language-specific teachers, professional consultants. They are asking that they have more support in that area. Again, you'll see the, some redundancy in the third bullet, consider analyzing student results based on educators' participation. I think what they're, the message that they're really giving to us is that we need to be a system, that we need to be a district that develops our program across the grades, both horizontally as well as vertically. Support for needs, so that indicator six, so I think as a school district, the department has created transparent system for placing students in honors classes. I think as a district, we do a really good job of really offering opportunities to all children. I would say there is a Tri-State's report that we've had where we don't come back in this area, as with commendations, saying that we are a district that values and believes in all children and all students, and I would say that through this, they saw the same thing. Number of students exempted, we try not to exempt students. Again, we do it on a case-by-case basis in middle school, because we really believe that children should, students should be in World Language, but we also understand that, that for some students, waiting for high school is really a better solution. So their recommendations for student needs is the same thing, one of the issues, and I thought I read it here, but maybe I read it, "For data to inform instructional decisions." So one of the issues, I would say, where I think this plays out, is that once, if you've missed out on starting French in middle school, one of our issues, and this is a size issue, we just don't always have the number of students, but we only then lead a student to Spanish in high school, because we've only been offering a Spanish one course. So that really knocks, any student who either joins us as a high school student, or a student who was exempt in middle school, no longer has that option. So we've, we've toyed with many different systems. One idea is to actually do it every other year, one year run French one in ninth grade, one year run French, Spanish one. So again, but you need the numbers of students. We generally have more students who are interested in Spanish, for Spanish one in the high school, but that would be another area where we could build some capacity. Shared vision, so they refer to the 2008 World Language Department developed a shared vision statement that outlined shared goals horizontally and vertically. Students in World Languages demonstrate confidence, enthusiasm, dedication to learning and using World Languages throughout. Again, I don't want to say it too often, but I also want to honor the work that we've done as a district and our community. That language is valued here, and we really do, so many of our students go on through the advanced courses, and so again, that was recognized here. As far as their recommendations for shared vision, collaborate to review and refine the mission statement. I think what they found was, even though there had been a shared vision statement developed, they didn't necessarily see evidence of that in the work. I think it's challenging to keep something, to create a vision and goals, you need to make sure there's someone there helping to keep it alive, and I think it's had ebbs and flows. So some of the work has been done, but I think at times it's lost its way a little bit. Create a collaborative process that allows and encourages teachers to think about the vision. So I think that that vision is not necessarily collective at this point. We've had some new teachers join the department, a couple of new teachers in and out. And the last one, which is consider the use and implementation of progressive technology. So I would say technology is an area that was definitely not seen as our strength. We have some teachers who are working and embedding technology very comfortably and providing all kinds of opportunity, and I think that we have other classrooms where there are limitations. While I think that's a challenge, I think we also know that some of our best and most beloved language classes, you know, doesn't necessarily use any technology, and kids love it and are drawn to it. So I think we need to be careful about what we mean when we, when we respond to that, but it certainly was notable. Parenting community, the district has in place practices that include parents in the larger conversation about World Language choices, selection process for courses and levels. So, you know, I think, I think that that was an interesting takeaway. I was a little surprised by that takeaway myself, but I bring a lot of history and experience in that, so.
Right.
Again, it depends on who people, it depends who they spoke to. So this is a good example where, depending on what parents they spoke to, which groups, and what they heard... and what they heard, so I'll leave it at that. There is a wide range of opportunities for parents to be involved in all facets of world language program. Again, I actually do think compared to many of our other curriculum areas, world language over the years really has had a tremendous number of people participating in the conversation. I don't think anyone could argue with that. Whether we could argue the results, the conversation, we can argue a lot of parts about that, but I think we've had a lot of people over the years join in. And the Board of Education and the Board of Community demonstrates support of the language program. So that clearly, you know, was true and that was an important takeaway. So for their recommendations under indicator eight, continues to find ways to leverage organizations. Again, for the authentic experiences, that was a big takeaway for them. Authentic, what does that look like for us? And, you know, at the last department meeting, we had a conversation and I said, you know, years ago, we were so dependent on families. So I said, you know, for me, my greatest hope of a second language was probably Yiddish. I grew up in a household, my mother's first language was Yiddish. So if I was going to be able to speak a language, Yiddish was probably, even though they didn't teach it in school, was probably going to be the language. But, you know, now we're not so dependent on families and their backgrounds and their language because language is so much more accessible than years ago. So I think that they really pushed us on that to say, where's the exposure beyond Irvington? And the last, I'm going to just drop to the last one, which is to continue to review and refine potential partners with Quad Village to expand opportunities, teachers and administration. You know, we've had lots of conversation over the years, certainly around languages such as Chinese and how do we, as such a small district, how many things can we offer and how do we broaden what we provide for students? You also know, from, most of you from your own children at this point, it's really hard to pick and choose what electives and you can fit just so much in your school day. And so as it is, we have so many of our students engaging in two languages. So, well, I'm saying so many engage in two and some in three. So I guess my point though is, is that even with that, our students are choosing to take Latin as electives and go there. So we do have the interest, but I would say it's a challenge for us as it is for many of the Quad Village districts. So what are the next steps as a result of the tri-states visit for the department and for the teachers? So we are working through a department-wide goal, which is really a district-wide goal, but here just listed for the department because of the report, which is articulation through the curriculum mapping based on collaboration. So the teachers are talking and working together to work through their curriculum mapping process. In addition to that though, which again is a district-wide goal, the department will be breaking, working in small groups on technology, differentiation of instruction as well as performance-based assessment and authentic assessment. So what we did was we went through the report and we asked each teacher to really identify something from the report, an area of growth for them. So for instance, I wouldn't say that Ali Tempest, who's an eighth-grade Spanish teacher who does a lot of technology, I don't think that Ali Tempest necessarily needs to make her goal technology, you know, she's, she does a lot of that already. So what we're asking them to do is think about, what might I look at, how might I grow my practice differently? Again, this is happening in parallel to mapping the curriculum. But the other piece that I just want to bring your attention to was, all of this work is happening simultaneously with so much other work in districts. So as you know, last week, our technology summit created, generated eight, the development of eight technology goals, or the, yeah, the development. And so goal seven, we had two of our language teachers participate in the development or the conversation around goal seven, which is global education and citizenship. And I guess I just want to start to connect the dots. This isn't only about tri-state, this isn't only about curriculum mapping, this is about how do we take off broader goals and expectations in the district for what we want students to know and be able to do and engage in? And how do we make all subject areas connected and aligned with these bigger pictures and with the broader commitment that we have as a school district, which in this case is goal seven around global education and citizenship? And I would say that the two teachers who participated, the next week when we were at the department meeting, they shared their, how excited and what they took away from this and how they already have ideas about how they're going to start to help world language be a catalyst for moving in this direction. So again, I just share that because I don't think it's helpful to see this in isolation. I think we need to see the broader picture.
I've been waiting for the, thank you. I've been waiting for the Q and A because I've been.
Bob, I was going to go in order tonight.
Oh, whatever you'd like to do.
Just to be a little more organized.
As you know, I'm pretty fired up tonight.
Yes, you are.
From not being here for two months, I apologize.
I thought we'd just go in order, just to.
Whatever you'd like to do.
Give Reina a chance to, all right, give all our board members to have a chance to ask questions.
No worries.
Maria, starting with you, going to start this side?
We could start with John.
You're not going?
No, because.
You want to go, you'll go first.
Phil, does that mean you don't have questions or you're just going to go last?
I'm just going like, well, I'm the board president.
So I just want to know what the board president's going to do. I believe you have the power to do however you want.
I'm starting for you.
Okay.
Only if we all vote.
I'll just speak up once.
All right, I think I would like to go. You go next.
No questions.
I do, I just need, I need a minute.
My thing is, and I mean, we could talk about, this is one data point, right? It's one organization coming in. I get that. I get the fact that when you do a review, you have to have conclusions or it doesn't make much sense to have done a review. I get all of that. But what flows, and it got me thinking when John made the comment about goals, what our goal is in the department, because if you look, if you drill down, and you know, we've been able to think about this for about eight minutes, you've been thinking about it for a while now. And I'm not trying to be accusatory and if, you know, but I guess, what, the ultimate question is, what do you need from us? Because it looks to me as if there's a vertical issue about collaboration within the language and then there's a horizontal issue about collaborating across the various languages to be consistent, as to John's point out, what the ultimate goal is. And I say that rhetorically with the backdrop, if you could indulge me, let me tell you a two-minute story about a little boy named Bobby. Little Bobby went to high school and little Bobby took four years of Latin and four years of French and got straight A's in all of them and took advanced placement in French, liked Latin better, but little Bobby placed out of the first year of French in college. And so he gets to college and he places into basically sophomore French and he gets into that class and the rule in that class was that you were not allowed to speak English. So, you know, and maybe that's part of the reason why I think we should get rid of the French program as a general rule, but it's also maybe it was a good idea that I couldn't speak French and so I didn't have to take the classes. But my point is, is, do we have the goal of what we expect as a proficiency for the person who's taken it for four years, five years? Is that the same across all languages? And then ultimately, is that what the college's expectations are when the student moves on? Because when I hear, and again, it's a provocative question and I'm not trying to put you on, that's why I said rhetorical, but it's, when you hear about sort of vertical and horizontal collaborative issues, which is really the bottom line in a lot of this, that's what it leads me to believe that we don't have a really good grasp of that.
We don't. That's exactly what the tri-states report is telling us. So again, pockets of good instruction, they really, they're not commenting on individual teachers or classrooms. Again, we have tremendous participation, but that's really what the tri-state report is saying. So what are, what are those outcomes and what's the relationship between the eighth-grade teacher and the ninth-grade teacher and ultimately that child, you know, that student who goes to honors or AP and why? Why does a student pick, why does a student pick 5H Spanish instead of AP Spanish? So, you know, I mean, so they raised questions that I don't think any of us would argue with and I think the department, when we, you know, we've met now several times on this topic. And clearly that's the next step. And I would say at the last department meeting, there was acknowledgement that they don't all agree. And I get that, but that's true in every subject area. That's not a world language issue. You're never going to get every social studies teacher to agree, every English teacher to agree. It's not about agreement, it's about consensus because, based on what's right for our students.
We add consistency too, right? I mean, because consensus, if you're talking about a shared goal of the district, you know, to a certain extent, and not that I, you know, consensus could sort of be imposed among a teacher group to the extent that the goal is, is for every kid that takes four years of language to be able to read a hundred-page text in that language. I don't know if that's a goal or not, but just as an example.
That's the consensus. The consistency comes from, so if that's our goal, then how are we working to get there? And how does our, how does our curriculum and instruction reflect that? Because that's the common goal. So whatever that goal is, I'm not talking about that, but that's the work. The consensus is, I may not agree with you, but you know what? This isn't about me as an individual, it's not about Reina Core, it's about who we are as a department.
So the answer to John's question, I'm going to chime in here and there, but you asked a question, Bob, that said, what do you need from us?
Right.
So I didn't necessarily hear the answer to that, I just, maybe that's a question.
I'm not sure what to say. I mean, we're moving forward, we have a plan. I've connected now with several people who I think could support the work with them. I think they, I think they, absolutely the department would benefit from having some expertise, outside expertise, help lead some of the vision and goal-setting work with them. But more than that, the curriculum work and the focus around, if this is the goal, how are we going to get there? And what does it look like every year? It's not just about what I'm going to teach this year, it's how is what I'm going to teach going to help and inform and support the next year's teacher?
Wait, you said we have a plan?
No, I said we have, I've looked into some people who can support them in their work. I'm saying that's the plan. They're saying that in order to move forward, they need support.
Are you done with your question?
Yeah, I sort of, you know.
That was it?
Yeah, but I guess there's a follow-up. I mean, is then, because I hear that even the goal is still up in the air as to what, I mean, because, let's face it, I don't feel it's the board's job to tell a French teacher how to teach French, but it is partly the board's job. Exactly right. But it is partly the board's job to say, you know, a goal of the district is to have, for the students who take world language to have a minimum, you know, what's the word I'm looking for?
Proficiency.
Proficiency, right.
Right. And we teach the standards.
Would that, I mean, is something like that from the board opening, and we're not prepared for that discussion tonight, obviously, because I think the room would be a little bit more packed if we were going to discuss the future of the language program, but.
Well, like any core, but like any curriculum area, we have standards that we teach to. So we don't, we don't have this conversation, in other words, around social studies or science. We have courses and we have standards that we teach to. So world language is always a little bit different in that. So maybe if I say back what I think I'm hearing you say, which is, do we want to say as a district, we have a higher expectation of proficiency in the target language as a speaker versus as a writer or as a reader? So I think that's really the conversation. I don't think that there is a world language teacher who would argue though, that they would like their students to speak. I don't think anybody could argue that. I think writing is a challenging one because most, most students leaving high school are not going to demonstrate writing in a target language unless they're, unless they are, and we have a place for those students. We offer the higher level opportunities. So I guess.
See, it's interesting because just using little Bobby's hypothetical Bobby, little Bobby was able to write in French. Wasn't able to speak.
That's, you're saying, you're saying, he's saying what I'm saying.
No, little Johnny could write. He could speak a little bit too, but.
You're saying what I'm saying.
More people can speak. I think it's easier to write in learning a language.
No, I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with you. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to mask it in something that didn't look like that.
No, 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 I thought you were just saying the opposite.
No, I'm saying that most, we tend to focus on reading and writing and less on speaking. Our kids don't like to speak. So when you go back to that slide that talks about dispositions and being risk-takers, I know like that may feel like jargon-y to you, but that's not what that is. What it's saying is, how do we create learning environments where speaking, which kids are the most reluctant to do, it's the most public.
Right.
And it's hard to speak in another language, especially if you're not so comfortable. How do we create environments where that's what's promoted and that's what's built and developed?
So in some sense, you're saying that that's kind of the area where we're out of balance in your view right now?
And, yes, I.
And we're talking, again, I assume we're talking about Spanish and French?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
But I mean, I think what Bob's saying comes back to the question that I know we've talked a lot about, talked about a lot over the years, which is, what is the vision of Irvington, the district with regards, and the mission statement and the vision with regards to where we want our kids to end up when they're done going through our language department? But to me, I think until you define that, and I don't think it's okay to have every teacher have a different thing, because I think that might, oh, okay.
No, again, no one's saying, I'm saying that's what the report is saying they saw.
Right, right. But I'm saying, but it seems like until we kind of, kind of throw that out, like say, here's our vision, it's almost hard to figure out where to go. For example, if it is speaking, then I would think there's a lot of things you could do with technology to create language labs in class and stuff, but how do you know? I mean, don't you need to know where you want to go in order to figure out how to get there? I guess, when, where are we in terms of your view on the vision and in terms of kind of more clearly defining it, so everybody's working toward the same place?
And that's where it leads to my ultimate question is, can we help in that process?
Well, I guess I'm not sure what that would look like. In other words, we don't sit in, I'm not, we don't do that for any other subject area. So I understand a vision for K-12, like I understand a vision that the board might want to set, but you need your teachers talking about what this should look like and the purpose of doing this tri-states report is to get that conversation going. Here's what I think I feel pretty confident about in terms of being aligned with your thinking and I think I know some of your thinking better than others. But I don't think we're far apart at all. I think we are in the same place. I think where there still remains conversations about that K-12 language, we still have conversations, but that's not what the, these are teachers who are teaching eighth-grade Spanish, ninth-grade Spanish. So I don't see that that work is coming from you, that work is coming from them. And I don't, and they teach to the standards.
I think it makes a difference. I mean, if the vision is that they should all be proficient speakers in 12th grade, I think how you set up what goes on in the classroom at, you know, six to 12 might look differently.
But I think that's what you saw in the tri-state report.
I know, but I'm saying, so what are, what are we going to do?
So I'm working with the teachers to move in that direction.
But to set a vision?
No, to include more speaking.
Okay, so that's our vision.
But that's the goal.
It just seems like we should be having a conversation about what the vision and the goal is about the language program and from that can flow what the structure, even down to, are we starting in the right grade? You know, we can understand what our structure of the program should be if we understand what the ultimate vision and goal is. And it probably is different for different students in some sense, right? It's hard to know how to evaluate much of this until we know what we have to district on.
And I agree with you, I think it would be, it would be fine if what you're saying is that the department is going through the exercise of defining how it sees itself and organize and how it deals with the things that the report comes out. Present that to us and see, with the background and get buy-in. I mean, because you're right, I don't think you could, you could determine this stuff without the experts.
Yeah. But this isn't really a report about the different possible goals or outcomes.
Right, no, absolutely, right.
Right? And it might be that speaking is important because you want people to be able to interact well in French or Spanish-speaking countries or neighborhoods. But it might be that there are other skills and aptitudes you develop through studying language that don't have a lot to do with speaking, that are just, you're better under, you know.
I guess it's just not clear to me, I'm not sure, in other words, and I could be completely wrong, but for me, we're talking about vision setting and naming it speaks to more, like what is the range of languages we'd like to have in our district? To me, that feels like the work, when you say.
That's a different level.
But when we talk about, you know, we have standards, our teachers teach to the world language standards, to national standards. So I'm not sure what that would look like in a subject area, where the teachers need to be setting the expectations and naming the goals. It's not the goal, they're not naming the goals. It's not the goal, they're not naming the goals of world language in Irvington. They're targeting the expectations and the standards based on a range and a continuum. So I guess I'm just not really understanding.
Maybe I'll jump in and see if I can.
Sure.
I think I understand what Bob and, and Robin and John are saying, which is that it's the requirement for us to see how this all fits together is a vision for our world language program and that there is a kernel of a vision in here, maybe the start of a vision, which is that we want all of our students to be proficient speakers. Now, that's a kernel of a vision that John said might not necessarily be the entire vision. But the point is, is that we don't really have a vision for what that proficiency or excellence is, that we haven't captured that in writing. And that hasn't been expressed, you know, as a, as a point of view for the whole world language program.
So I guess I'm just trying to understand, but we don't do that for social studies or science or any area.
Well, maybe we, well.
Well, probably because, can I just jump in a second? Probably because that is more articulated with a set curriculum. In other words, because there are standardized tests where in world language there isn't. I mean. Not in high school, Maria. What do you mean? Well, there are some, but our kids take all kinds of courses. We didn't, and again, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm trying to put this in the context of every other subject area. So I.
But, but, you know, whether or not we do it for other subject matters doesn't, to me, bear on whether it's a good thing to do here. I mean, the fact that we don't do something somewhere else doesn't, to me, answer the question of whether it's a good idea to do it here. I mean, it seems like there's value in doing it here.
But it's also a unique issue. I think to Spanish and French, in our district, Latin is more, doesn't fall. But I mean, in the other subject areas, you're not focusing on, well, you can come out as a writer or you could come out as a speaker. I mean, it's all one thing. I think with the language, there's clearly, at least to what I think is, there's sometimes, and maybe there isn't a focus, maybe the vision is, we want that well-rounded child that, you know, can do everything pretty good. But I think there are probably different programs that focus on different angles. So I think there's an added layer of complexity when dealing with language that you don't have in social studies.
I think when we look at it, there certainly are different things before us. And when I, when I step back and I'm hearing, thinking about goals and talking about goals and whether we're trying to differentiate from a world language or social studies or wherever the case may be, what I'm hearing from the board is that there's a value to world language and that you're wrestling with wanting to help define and shape some of the direction and the charge that you want to give the district. So when we look at the work that Reina has talked about that's being launched, we're addressing some of the recommendations that are coming up. So there's inconsistencies in instruction, inconsistencies in expectations, there's a lack of some common understandings. The application and use of language seems to vary from classroom to classroom, potentially language to language. So structurally, we're stepping back and we're looking at our program and saying, hey, these are the areas that we've gotten critique. So we're going to map out our pathway to be able to fix those things. What I'm hearing the board then say is, well, so that's all well and good that we're looking at doing that. That's great. It's necessary. You know, probably as parents, as community members, we've seen examples of that ourselves. We've heard that from our friends and neighbors. So, but what we're saying is kind of like, big picture, where are we going and mission? So I think there's pieces of this that you are going to be hearing from us as we're moving forward and that we're just processing this. And that conversation about where do we go with language and, you know, Rani said, K-12, do we start to have a conversation about within the difficult financial world that we're living in in schools, do we have value in looking, trying to expand the offerings to our kids? Whether that is looking at bringing, starting to bring instruction back down to lower grades, is that introducing other languages? And is any of that viable? So when I talk about viability, I'm thinking about not only the economics of it, can we find a way to do it? But can we support adding other languages? And when, certainly, you know, Bob, you made your comments about French. You know, I'm certainly not on a mission to eliminate French. But if you were to introduce another language to the fold, does another, then does a French or something else become, does, you know, Greek or Latin become a victim of another?
Well, and I'm glad you brought up the fiscal point because the language program, really in every budget that we've done since I've been around, you know, there has been a football that has gotten tossed around with the language department. And I do think, to put even a finer point on Phil's, and I think what we're talking about is, is if, if the goal, and if the shared goal with the board, the administration, the department, is that we value language so much that we expect, or we're shooting, I mean, expect, we're shooting that every kid has, you know, after four years is going to be fairly fluent, okay? Which is probably a little bit further than what the curriculum calls for, I would bet. Versus the shared goal being, we want all of our children to have exposure to different languages. Not only does that, I think, give direction to the work that the department needs to do, but also gives direction to the board at the time when the budget comes up and there's a question about cutting this or adding this or cutting that versus something else. I think that's the.
And I would love to have a board meeting discussion devoted to those sorts of questions. What are we doing?
I agree. Good idea.
Not just, you know, secondary question maybe about, is the, you know, I think it's a separate question to whether the mix of language is right, but what are the, what should the language program, what do we as a community want the language?
I agree with you.
Doing.
But it also sounds like from what you guys are saying, that you've identified some of these things in your mind and you're kind of working through them. So how can you share that information with us so that we at least understand that where the time and energy is going right now? And, you know, I think it helps everybody to kind of get the big picture of what you guys are thinking.
So that's what I was saying. So that's the work that we're starting. So I've identified a couple of different people who could come in and support the work. And it's not that, again, I just want to make sure I said this, and I'm not suggesting that they are coming in and setting the goals for the district around world language, the big picture. I'm talking about working toward the articulation from one grade to another, from identifying what the work will be that will grow our students more proficiently. Let me maybe make a comparison that would be helpful. One of the things that we saw with ELA several years ago was that our teachers were, because we didn't have a well-articulated curriculum, our teachers were teaching the same things over and over again. And so, teaching unfortunately is a profession, teachers tend to start from the beginning. They never really trust what came before. It's the nature of teaching. So we felt that because we didn't, we weren't well-articulated, teachers were going back to zero. Instead of saying, you know what, I know kids come with this and I can assess for it, and I'm seeing kids know how to do this. So one of the teachers, and I'm not, and this is in language now, one of the teachers shared that she was a little surprised that the kids didn't speak more. Well, she was wondering why they weren't speaking in the target language as much she's teaching at one of the higher levels. And in a conversation, it came out, well, what is that previous teacher's expectation? So when I talk about the articulation, that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the strength in a department knowing and trusting what I taught the year before got my, that student ready for the next year. So that's the work of the department appropriately. They're not setting the vision or goal for the whole district, but they need to be doing that work. And we work from a set of standards that include all of the standards, reading, writing, speaking. So it's not, we're not eliminating anything. I think there's an interest from the teachers themselves to strengthen the speaking part because, again, the writing and reading part seems to be stronger, the speaking part seems to not be as strong.
If I may, I was, I'm glad you clarified that last part because I think there was misinterpretation or miscommunication around that. You know, I'm seeing, you know, what Reina is talking about is the work that is going to occur that based upon the critique that has been received and it's necessary and recognize that there's limitations in, when it comes to language, that you don't have a lot of local expertise. So we have to acknowledge there needs to be some external expertise guidance that we can bring in to lead that process. When we step back and we think about that broader visioning and goal piece and direction piece, to me, my mind is that, well, hearing what Reina is saying and saying, well, there's a piece that, well, we don't get in and say, let's say what our expectations are in one content area or another. But where that opportunity, I think, does lie and is totally appropriate for the board is to have that conversation in around our, when we're looking at our long-range goals. Because if we're going to establish goals in there, what is our value for the world language program? And when we start to look at those objectives, we're going to build out objectives for not just one year. Well, one year, we have issues with our program, needs in our program we need to look to identify. But then when we're mapping out what those objectives look like in years to come, well, is that looking at how we potentially can grow the program? Is that setting, you know, a standard of expectation that the board issues a value statement in and around, we want, we value the world languages and we want our children to have, be proficient in these experiences? So I think there's that opportunity really there for the board to define it and do so in a way that then guides and informs the work that trickles down. And then we ask the administration of that responsibility to turn around and to come up with a plan that's going to satisfy that objective. And that's something, that's a conversation that I think we really wrestle with here around the table. The teachers have to do that part. Reina's got to do that part with the teachers and the principals. But that bigger picture, I think, comes back to what are we talking about we want from our district? And I think that lies in that work.
But I agree with that, but I also think, and you're right, that I think it's different for language for some reason. But I think there's the long term in terms of, you know, longitudinal kids in a year from now. But then I also think, I think what some of us were talking about is a mission statement would really affect instruction today. It wouldn't be like we're working toward a longer goal. And from what you're saying, it's all kind of related. And communication, I think, is key to that. And I'll give you an example. How about Little Kerner, not me, but Little Kerner, had a test in language and came home and, it's my third kid, and apparently it was verbal, which is great. But I was happy, but I hadn't had that happen in multiple kids. So it was interesting that that communication would be helpful just in general. So that, you know, if we know what's happening as community members and parents, you know, I think just in general, people have always been interested in the language program. And I think the more the people know that it's a focus and you're working on and you're doing this, I think that stuff's really interesting and helpful, too, to share. So.
John, did you have any other questions? I'm just finishing down the line here.
Let me just take a look at my scrawled notes and see if there's anything important we didn't cover.
Do you mind if you see temporarily to Robin?
No, I don't mind. Please.
I do want to call out one person, just, I guess, for anyone who might watch this, but in the audience is Jill Rember, who, when you speak about the parents who have spent time on it, I just think you have to call out Jill because she probably collectively has spent more time working on the district's language and kind of keeping it alive and healthy than anyone else. And you guys probably don't even know her that well, but I just wanted to give a shout out to Jill because she really continually made it a priority and made people pay attention to it and made people, yeah.
But, wait, what?
I guess I'm not allowed to say.
Let me interrupt really quickly. I just want to say that 17 years ago, I came to a board meeting and I said, or a number of us said, I wasn't the only one, and we asked for a vision. What's the vision? And I am so excited to hear that this board really wants to make this a prayer. So thank you.
Thank you.
It's a little distressing that it happened.
I was going to say, thank you.
And there was probably, there was probably somebody in the audience 17 years ago was thinking, I did that 17 years before that.
Exactly.
Yeah, so you have a question?
This is more of an operational, I have a question on that report. Indicator number four, recommendations, it says, consider adopting a systematic process of collecting, sharing, and comparing data across languages. I mean, I don't, I guess I'm wondering if you could help me understand how they would think about cross languages. I didn't, I can't envision that.
Yeah. So I think what they're saying in that particular recommendation is, they're saying that we should be having ongoing conversation about what are the expectations. So in other words, shouldn't the expectations in French be the same? It's a different language, but if we have a goal for kids, it should be the same. And I think they're saying, to get to do that, it would be through collecting, sharing, and comparing.
Okay.
Okay. I know, if you want, I have my question ready.
Go ahead.
I had a, I wanted to, I had originally, I did originally have questions. Well, one question, I have two of my questions, I think, have been answered and I have one that I want to ask. Let me tell you the two that have been answered. One is, which I think Bob and others have spoken a lot about, is, I see these essential questions, and I think that they seem to, they seem to have generated a lot of useful information from the tri, the tri-state. But the question was going to be, how do we go beyond the essential questions? And I think we've spent a lot of time talking about that, with the talk about goals and mission and all that. So that's fine. Answered, I think. What you mean by articulated, I think I've also, the word keeps meaning different things in different contexts, but I think I, but I understand it to mean here is, different levels, you teach different aspects, and it all kind of fits together in a whole over time for a student. But I want to talk about authentic. And there's a lot of emphasis here on authenticity and authentic experiences. And I haven't heard enough to make me convinced that that concern is well-placed, I guess, that it's not sort of an article of faith that speaking to, on the internet to somebody in, I don't know, Lyon, is a better way to learn French than having a vigorous in-class French discussion? Where you're actually, you know, you're actually, you know, having a well-trained teacher up there interacting with his or her students and getting them all to speak, which is certainly how I learned French in high school, imperfectly, but I did. So I wonder about, if you can say a little bit more about why you place the importance you do on authenticity and why it matters?
So I think that authentic.
And am I understanding it correctly?
Yeah. I think, yeah, well, yes and no. So I think authentic is actually something that we've, we're talking about in all subject areas. It's not only, it's giving kids real-life, real-life opportunities, real-life opportunities to engage in thinking and apply, we've taught, we've heard this expression a million times, like real-world situations, real-world problems. So Patricia Barbogallo, who's our new French teacher, is, has connected to her high school in Switzerland, and she is setting up pen pals with students in a high school in Switzerland who will then engage with our students here. So when we talk about authentic, that it's really just, it is the kind of experience that we would have in real world, right? We connect with people, people we don't know. We're expected to write in English, we're expected to communicate using language. And then she and the teacher in Switzerland will be designing, whether it be the activities or what students will be communicating about and with, and some of it will be very designed. So where they might be applying very specific skills that she's taught in language. And some of it is really kids just getting to talk to other kids who are speaking in the target language with them. So does that make sense?
Yeah. And what's the thinking on the benefits of this? Is it better student motivation? Or is it, I mean, the language is the language, whether you're speaking to students in Switzerland or your teacher in Irvington, right?
Well, but I guess, I'm not, I'm not sure about that. In other words, the whole, the whole learning.
I guess it makes, and it's even a deeper question when you're talking about, what is the usefulness of an authentic experience in, say, learning calculus? But if we're talking about language.
But if the teacher's not designing learning experiences, I'm not sure then what teaching and learning looks like. The whole goal in our classrooms is to create learning experiences that engage students in applying the knowledge and skill that you're teaching them. And so, yeah, and we do know.
But are, does that a way of saying that all experiences are authentic? Or authentic experience is only a subset of all the different ways you can learn?
Authentic experience is just one example. So it's not authentic experiences all day long, every day, but it's saying, how do I take my target language? How do I take the target language and apply it beyond talking to my teacher?
I think it speaks to the proficiency level. So when, if you're in a very stagnant environment where it is the same level of exchange that may occur between teacher and student, teacher and worksheet or writing activities or student to student, I think there, it introduces a different dynamic and enables the student to apply language skills in a, in a different. to apply language skills in a different manner. So it comes down to, I think, a piece of student becoming more masterful in the language and being able to understand and have some independence around the use, so it's not as directed or scripted as it may be in a particular classroom environment. So I think it's one of those ways, if you think about differentiating instruction, it's certainly opportunities for kids to be challenged and enrich their learning experience, because there's going to be dynamics that are going to be introduced that may be different, that's going to, it's going to extend beyond the confines of a teacher's particular lesson. I think back to my own experience, we're all telling stories, and well, mine isn't that old, but having gone to China six years ago or so, certainly wasn't fluent in Mandarin, but studied that list of phrases, those things, should I get in trouble, those things, you know, to be an appreciative guest. And, but when I got there, there were limitations to those phrases and even trying to apply them in those given situations. And that went outside a little workshop I attended, the things that I listened to on the internet and the activities I engaged in. It wasn't authentic, because I could say a few words to them, but it didn't translate into what the real meaning was for the people that were actually speaking the language. So to me, it turns into an experience where you're enriching the experience for kids, you're increasing proficiency. Certainly, John, there, I think there becomes a motivational factor associated with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, you know, there's novelty to it. Hey, I'm going to speak to a native speaker, or I'm going to be able to speak about a difference and be able to have different types of conversations than I'm going to have with my teacher or the kid that's sitting next to me that's living in Westchester County as well. So there's different dynamics that introduce, that are introduced there. So I think there's opportunities, Raina said, it's a piece of what teachers do. So to say that, I think they're looking for consistency in that we are providing authentic experiences, that you're taking advantage of resources. For example, we have our French students wanting to go to Quebec, something on tonight's agenda. That's an opportunity to explore culture, that's an opportunity for kids to apply language. That's an example of that. And I think they're looking to do more of that. And I think we have an interest in wanting our kids to have more experiences like that, yes.
I mean, I always feel like the beauty of language is that, for a kid, it's so tangible for them to show that they know they've learned something, if they could communicate with another kid. I always, I always felt like that was one thing that you get in a language that you don't like. If you know something, how to do a geometry, how do you do that? But that's just me.
Okay, that's helpful. That's, thank you.
Did you have a question, Maria?
Um, yes. I need a little bit more clarity on one point, about the professional development. Are you saying this professional development is going to come in and help, help the teachers with these, the first essential question, which is, help build, make sure that the program from grade to grade is more sequenced? Or is the professional development here to help with the broader questions in terms of making it more rigorous?
I would say both, because I think they're a function of each other, really. I think you need to have both of those things working simultaneously. So the person would come in and facilitate and lead some conversations. And, you know, sometimes having an outside voice is very helpful when you have all people who are part of the system working in one place. They also see things that you don't see necessarily. So it's, I would say, it's both, Maria. So we need someone who can help us develop curriculum, but also make sure that it's rigorous. But really, to John's point, which is also, help us develop some ideas for how our teaching and learning is designed, and so that we have our students engaging in different opportunities to, to learn and understand the languages as well as apply the language. So I think the person would do all, would do both of those things. Does that make sense?
A consultant? Or are we bringing someone on staff?
A consultant.
Oh, okay. And the same person's going to do multiple languages? Or is it really?
How many? Two?
Well, he'll, but he'll also help the, he'll also work with the Latin and Greek teachers to develop, design curriculum.
Oh, okay. And do we, do we have, do we know how many, like, how many hours we're going to have this person?
We're working, we're.
Just kind of see how it goes.
We're trying to work that through. We'd probably start with, with this one person we're looking at, he would actually start by doing some observation in the classrooms, so that he would get a sense of what our practice looks like now, so that he could help guide the practice and the development. So did that answer or no?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Anybody else? So I had just one more.
You have, hey, you an assistant?
Well, you know, held back. So I remember, I think it was 2010, when there was a committee that Matusiak, Dr. Matusiak had, you know, commissioned, that was parents and teachers, and it was a World Language Committee. And I'm just wondering, you know, how does the arc of, of the experience here in Irvington evolve from that point then to where we are today and the recommendations that we have before us, the analysis that we've talked about tonight? Where were we back then? And where are we now? And is it about, are we having the same discussion?
It's a lot, given the number of people.
Are we having the same discussion, you know, four years later?
Interestingly, I'm going to say no. So the first committee was actually 2002, Jill, 2001, first committee, 2001, 2002. Oh, 97. So the recommendations, though, it was 2003, when we made the changes.
Sorry, Jill.
So that was the first committee. 2003, we made.
There were at least three or four that I know best, of course.
Right. So there was, so 2010 was just another, was the third, I want to say, in the committees. And one of the things, and Jill and Robin can both disagree with me, I felt we spent a lot of hours and a lot of time, what I think we spent 95% of the time on was what I hear you all talking about, which is setting the vision for the bigger picture, whether that be K-12 languages, whether that be language choices. In those meetings, we spent almost no time relatively on actually our secondary program as a conversation. So it would come and, it would ebb and flow, but most of what visits were to schools where they had put language in at the lower grades. I think Nina Garrett talked about the research around language acquisition. So I think we did a lot of conversation and work, but not very much was really focused on the 612 program. It was more focused on bringing the language in the earlier grades. So I don't know how I'd answer that, Phil. I don't know if we're in a different place, or if we're in the same place. I don't know. I actually looked to Robin to see, for you to that one.
Am we in a different place? I don't, I don't know. I mean, I think it's a great question, because I actually think, as you look at the tri-states, the question is really, putting all else aside, how is this going to make a, you know, how is this going to get for a better experience for our kids? Like, what can we do with this that's going to make, you know, by the end of the year, maybe, the kids will have a slightly better experience than they had last year? I mean, that's kind of what I think the tri-states is about, to me. So I think that's, you.
And coherence, maybe. Right? And coherence? Like, I feel like the report's really about coherence in our, in our program.
Yeah. And that's what kind of really bothers me. Because I feel the first essential question, and this is what I've been sitting on, this is something that has been talked about and reported back from parents. I mean, this is something, this question has been asked and answered, well, not answered, but this has been the concern way before I came to the high school and the middle school, and it's still the same question, and it's not been addressed. And that is what's so disappointing, I think, in this whole process. I think the second two questions is more what I was looking for when I heard that the tri-states were coming here to visit. And this is more kind of what I'm happy with about the report, but that first question is just, I'm just, I don't even know what to say to that first question. And I'm, I can't, I mean, why was that even a question? Why was that on there?
Well, but you can see from the results that it needed to be asked yet again.
How is it that no one saw that answer already? I got to think that everyone already knew the answer.
But I guess that, so here we are, you're saying it's the obvious. And as Raina said throughout the presentation, when we talked about when they acknowledged strengths, that the strengths were in pockets. So you're talking about certain aspects of the program, certain classrooms, so talking about inconsistency. So when you think of someone coming in from a leadership standpoint, you're looking at a position of wanting to be able to name and define the needs and to be able to use those particular results from the inquiry to then inform and guide the work. So you can have that frustration, I respect and understand that. But we asked the question, we got the answer to the question, and now we're saying that we're taking the steps to respond and address that. So I can't speak to why it was there and has been talked about in years and years past, but we got the question, we got the answer that I think is consistent with what may be known, and now the plan is to address that and to set that continuity, to establish those particular standards moving forward. So there's, I understand that, maybe coming back Jill's comments about conversations 17 years ago, Phil's question a minute ago. But obviously, the question needed to be asked, and now we're talking about the actionable steps to address it.
We can segue to questions from the audience around the presentation. No?
Yes.
Yes, we do have questions. I thought we might.
Catherine Johnson, hi. Oh, Raina, my favorite thing, oh, I guess I'm supposed to talk to you. My favorite thing was, oh, I didn't realize that risk-taking was connected with speaking. It is very scary to speak, so I, I'm glad that that's a, that's a focus. I would also say, I wasn't hearing listening, as, listening is unbelievably hard. I mean, to this day, I cannot hear Spanish. I mean, it's awful. And just like Bob, I could read Spanish my gut of high school, could write, okay, not great, but okay. I couldn't, I was scared to speak, and I couldn't hear at all. I still can't hear. That's another thing with all of this and this whole report, because I have all two students, foreign language students in my class, you know, I've been doing some of the reading on the literature, there's all kinds of interesting research on minimal pairs and how you teach kids, how can you hear these differences? Like, you know, the Japanese apparently can't hear L versus R, they can't hear it physically. Well, I'm just not seeing any of that here. There's nothing here about what does it take to get kids to fluency? So anyway, I won't take up too much of your time, but in terms of the community, and this relates to fluency and what the goals are, you know, the board community popped up there a lot, but no one in the community was involved in this process. So, you know, tri-states didn't talk to any members of the community, just to parents, that's it.
No.
Parents.
Well, no, she, no, no, no. She listed who was talked to. Well, there was no one who wasn't a parent who was talked to. Jill wasn't talked to, right?
Yes.
This year?
Yes. We went back to parents who were on the, so let me just clarify, our parent outreach was, outreach was extremely wide for that reason. We went back to any parent who ever sat on a committee, a World Language Committee in districts since 97.
Oh, that's great. No, that's.
Yes. They didn't, not everyone agreed, but we reached out to everyone that we could.
No, the day before the meeting, I asked six people who were, who were not in the commission.
Well.
Yeah, but also, you know what? I think that's great, that you talk to Jill and talk to other people. I would just start branching out. You know, the thing about this is, I was actually on a board for seven years. So I know board law, and that is that the board sets the mission and the executives execute the mission. In your case, since you guys were all elected, the community comes up with the vision. Basically, you guys then set the mission on the basis of us, you know, the basis of the community that elects you. And this community will tell you what the, what the mission is. The mission is fluency, it's speaking, it's reading, it's writing, and it's listening. It's going to be fluency. Obviously, everyone wants K-5. They want you negotiations to be tough enough to find the money for that. That comes from the community. And so the only other thing I wanted to say is, I hope that, you know, this, John's point about authentic, you know, experiences and whatnot, that should just be fun. That's not, that's not fundamental to learning language. As he said, he learned language in a high school. It's great if kids can talk to kids overseas, you know, I enjoyed it in, you know, when I was a kid. I wouldn't want to see teachers be evaluated, I think I actually wrote it down, one of your goals is teachers will use, I don't know whose this was, it was just on the thing, teachers will use technology to promote engagement in global society, the global society. I wouldn't, for me, that's not a goal. Also, there's no global society. I mean, what just happened in Israel today? You know, what happened, who got beheaded last week? There's no global society. That's just, that's a fantasy. That's just, we're just talking about the internet. I wouldn't want to see a teacher get a bad evaluation or get dinged or get in any way have trouble for not trying to have our kids on the internet talking to the global society. Last but not least, we have gone to Aruba twice. The last time we came back, we interviewed our cab driver. Those kids speak something like five languages fluently. I mean, they know how to do it, they start at first grade. It used to be six languages. You know, this can be done, the community wants it to be done. I think the board should just set it as a goal, or not the goal, a vision. And there it is. Anyway.
Thank you.
So thanks for calling me out, Robin. I just want to say that what, the first time that we had a conversation, that I was around, that we had a conversation with the board was 17 years ago, and we, and it's happened subsequently since. So I think that the board has never been the board, and I'll just talk about all the subsequent boards that have been addressed with this question, and I haven't really done it myself the last couple, three years, so I don't really know real well what's going on. But I think that there's a lot of bravery required, and I'm really heartened to see you saying that you want to take control of this and you want to have some sort of mission, state your values and, because I, because I think the problem always has, one of the problems, I think there are several problems, but one of the problems has always been that the board was, I'll say unwilling, you can use whatever adjective you think is right, but the board did not ever agree to say, this is our, this is what we think we should have for world languages in Irvington. It's never happened, and we've asked a lot, the community has asked a lot. When I say we, I don't usually like to say me and a lot of other people, but in this case, it was me and a whole lot of other people. So I think that you would find a great deal of support. And of course, it always comes back to the money. If we do this, then, you know, what's that going to cost us and what can't we do? But I think you need to ask the community, because I think that there is a lot of support to do this big thing that you're talking about doing. So thank you very much for, for taking that interest. And then I want to ask something, so that's the, really the big thing, and then I have a smaller question or a more granular thing, which is, when we're talking about, you know, I assume that the report is much bigger than this, and Raina said you were pulling out the highlights. I don't know how much the tri-states defined for you where 612 curriculum is effectively sequenced, in what language, or what, you know, if it's effectively sequenced between, you know, eighth and ninth grade in French and this and that in another language, if you have all of those things. But I'm assuming that in some places it really works and in some places it doesn't work so well. And so my question is, while you're bringing in profession, I'm assuming, that maybe that's a big assumption. Is that fair assumption, before I go on, based on that assumption?
Yeah. I mean, I guess the one thing I would say is that, you know, it also depends, because we're so small, so I think French is always my easiest one to share. So it's very well sequenced when you have the same teacher teaching it for three years versus a different teacher teaching it every year. So I guess I just want to be careful.
You mean Latin or?
No, French.
Oh. We only have one.
French compared to Spanish. In middle school, so French, so, so kids get the same teacher every year, so it's a lot easier to sequence when you're the person who taught it the year before than when you're transitioning. We also have movement where we've moved teachers in and out. So yes and no, I guess.
Okay. So, so my, and, yeah, just two questions. So one is whether the, where we are effectively sequenced, if we're going to be able to draw on those sequences to push them into other, the other language, where it's not effectively sequenced in those years, rather than having the professional development person do all of that. I don't know what sort of cooperation there is between French and Spanish, and whether you're trying to, well, my other question is, what I don't understand is the role, I mean, I think that our departments have chairs, and I don't really know what the roles are of the chairs of a department, whether it's more than making some budgetary decisions about how much, so my question is, does the chair of the Foreign Language Department have anything to do with, or how much does the chair have to do with this, or helping make decisions, or being drawn on there?
Sure. So Deanna Tesler is the chair, and she's been a key, she was, you know, key to getting ready for the visit, preparing for the visit, guiding teachers through the process. She's also been key in looking at the report and trying to understand and make sense of it and decide, how do we go to the next step? She certainly is a leader in the department, but I would say, you know, she's a teacher who teaches four and is off one period. So she's a contributor for sure and provides leadership, but I don't, if you're suggesting, could she be leading the work, is that what you're suggesting, Jill?
It's, it's a question about how much the chair can do, you know, how much the chair can do and having a person here who, I mean, if she only has a period, I don't really know how much she is able to do in terms of understanding everything that's going on or requiring things. I mean, I don't know what sort of authority she has.
No, they're instructional leaders, they don't have authority, they're not evaluators or supervisors, that's not their role. They're teachers who support practice and instruction. So she'll certainly, and does play a role in that, but again, she teaches four periods a day.
Jill, can I just see if there's any other questions, you know, because typically we.
No, just thank you very much and be brave.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Please state your name, sir.
David Graeber. A quick question. It's less a question and more curiosity. I'm really interested in the piece, you talked about the performance-based assessment and then when John asked this question about authenticity, it's sort of, I drew a mental connection there and I was curious to see how, it's not necessarily answerable at this moment, but to see the, how that connection will draw together the two components. How will the authentic experience be represented in terms of performance-based assessment? So that, I think that will potentially help answer other questions, but I'm curious to see how that, that piece plays out. So if that's something that maybe can be addressed at future.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions from anybody who hasn't spoken? No? Any last questions, Jill, now that?
Can I make one last?
Yes, you may, please.
This is history. This is the.
Second timers are welcome.
Oh, thank you. This is, this is, you know Penny Delaney, right? I've never met her, I met her once. When was she on the board? Like twen, this is before we moved here. Penny Delaney told me years ago, they, the board then was trying to hire, I can't remember, might have been a superintendent, superintendent or Raina's position, I can't remember what they were trying to hire, because they didn't have a superintendent back then. The whole goal was to try to get curriculum, it's what Maria said, you know, how is this even a question? And that's kind of how I felt. The reason they were trying to hire this person was to try to get curriculum sequenced across grades. That was at least 25 years ago. So I don't know what, where that leads us, but that's.
Thank you for the Irvington history lesson. We may have a quiz later on since, I grew up here.
In Spanish?
In Spanish. Actually, I took.
Well, I don't know if it's chavo or shavu, but I think we beat the dead one.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Chavo is what I don't have, chavo is what you.
I got you. Beating at this point.
All right, all right, calm down, people. We'll move on to.
My use of French.
Any other questions on tonight's agenda? This is a big item, so I presume probably not.
Okay.
We'll move on to our consent agenda and I think we are going to probably adopt the resolution of the consent agenda and then we will discuss the items under it before we vote on it. So can I have a motion to accept our consent agenda, which includes items in seven, eight, nine, and, yeah, so through nine. So again, we're not voting, we're just adopting it and then we'll discuss it. Can I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So are there any questions related to any of these items in here? Any questions, yes, John?
I have a quest, well, a question and more of an action comment. So the question, first of all, relates to the, the, the two, on, on this agenda, unless it's changed since the weekend, our approval for two field trips. One, the, the Washington trip, which I think has happened every year for many years, for eighth grade, and the other is this proposed trip to the province of Quebec, which is called La Belle Province here, which is great. What, what costs, I know there's, it says that there's, the cost is, money is raised through fundraisers and I guess by fees on children who can pay. What cost, if any, does the district bear or does it pay for the teachers to go or what?
The cost of the trip is included, so generally it's based on a certain number of students and in that cost is a certain number of adults.
But the cost of the adults is spread across the students.
So the, that includes the district, the members of the faculty who go?
The chaperones.
Chaperones.
Right, right. Okay. And that's paid for by the, that money comes, money to compensate them comes from the money that's collected from students.
Not to compensate them. So where teachers contractually get paid for their supervision, that, that's borne by the district. But when we look at costs associated with their attendance on the trip, their transportation, their lodging, that is included in these costs.
Okay.
It's a chaperone fee.
Right, so.
Can I, one question on the French trip. Are they opening that up to kids who don't take French, like the kids who take Spanish or is it only for the French kids?
My understanding is just the French.
Carving the French.
The French kids, okay.
So that was my question and the other state, on the tax cert, you know, I've been asking questions back and forth, but I don't, I don't yet feel like I have gotten enough information on that to feel comfortable with this one and I'm happy to just bow out of the vote on this if other people are still comfortable on it, but I don't feel comfortable enough to vote on, on that particular item.
Okay.
Okay. Pull it out.
Yep.
Anything else?
Anything else?
No, not for me.
Great. So we are now, do I have to do a re, no, we're just voting on, yep. Okay. So we're voting on 7.1 through 8.6 and 9.2 and 9.3. How do we say?
Yes.
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 Yes, right. And then on the matter of 9.1, which is the tax cert with Rexon, how do we say?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And abstain or no?
I abstain.
You abstain, okay.
I've never done a thing that before, didn't we need to say all those in favor? All right.
Yeah, whatever.
Well, what, what have we said?
Four.
Four? Four zero?
Yeah. What abstention? So that takes us through our consent agenda. Any other questions? This is now 10.1. Any other questions from our community regarding anything in our school district tonight or now is the time? Nothing?
Hearing not.
Hearing nothing. We will move on to any other questions from the board, not on the agenda that any board member would like to bring up at this time.
Yes. You know, I've, the issue I think that I raised offline, raised separately is the issue of what information we get on student discipline and, you know, I don't phrase this in a way that doesn't tread on particulars because I don't, that's not something we can do in a public forum or should do in a public forum. But, you know, I have asked for, to get more systematic information from the administration on, particularly related to student suspensions, about what, what, you know, what the, how long students are being suspended, what, what the nature of the disciplinary issue is in some summary form, what grade they're in. And the, I think the, you know, I think that would be useful in, in our being able to have some oversight into that process and to assure ourselves that it's, you know, that, that this is a, we've, that the approach that's being taken is reasonable, that it's balanced and fair. You know, people may believe it's reasonable and balanced and fair, but I think it's hard to know that unless you have data and information. On top of that, there, I just note, and not that I'm uncomfortable with suspensions, but there have been various things in the press lately about whether suspensions, I mean, New York City is undergoing a big reevaluation of its use of suspensions now, under the current chancellor, I believe. So it's a fair question, you know, that we might conceivably want to be asking about whether the suspension policy is right, but, you know, that's a separate issue from just understanding what's going on. And I, for one, and it may just be one, would like to see, you know, a simple tabulation of, of the information over, you know, a period of time, say the last three years, of what, what students have been suspended for, how long, and what grades they've been in when that's happened. So we can understand what we're, what we as a district are doing in this regard, because I think it's a very serious thing to take a student out of school and I want to, I at least want to understand what we're doing better.
Okay.
Okay? So that's, that's what I would like to, you know, speak on publicly and hope that the board will support. I'm not sure they will, but I still feel a need to, you know, get, get the views of the board on that and, so there.
Do I have other board members sort of speak up in support or not of John's position?
Well.
I'm happy to make it a motion and I think I can move that we do this, but anyway, it doesn't have to be.
I have a question, because there's two types of, I guess, suspensions. There's the ones that exceed five days, which goes through superintendent's hearing, right?
Can go through a superintendent's hearing.
Well, no, that isn't, that's a law.
If the student, if the student takes advantage of the right to go, right?
No, maybe on five days would be referred to a superintendent's hearing unless there's an agreement that's settled upon between district and the family.
That's what I meant, I guess, but yeah, okay.
Okay. And, and we know about those, so is that what you're talking about? I'm still very unclear.
Well.
That is what, the information we get.
We get, I think we get it in a very piecemeal way and if that's what we have, then fine, it'd just be nice to see it all assembled in an easy-to-access format.
Yeah. I mean, I, I guess where I come out on this, John, and, and listen, we're all entitled to our opinions. I guess going sort of from macro to micro. Any board member is entitled to any information that's foilable. This information's not foilable because of two things. One, it deals with personnel records and secondly, it's not in the form. Student records. Student records, right. And it's not in the form that, that you're asking for it necessarily because each suspension, each disciplinary matter is dealt with individually. So, you know, trying to look at them for, for trends and things like that, you know, I don't know how much, how much applicability is and that's why these things aren't kept in that matter, because they're dealt with in individual files. So then you go to the next level, right? Which is, the board's entitled to whatever it wants, right? So you're suggesting that the board ask the administration to compile this information and because you, you'd like to see it organized and maybe you might, you know, glean some sort of thing. I guess ultimately where I come out on that is, is that, and I'm not suggesting that, I don't want to use fishing expeditions, I don't think you're trying to find something that's wrong, absolutely. And I just want to say.
I'm not. I, I, I feel like it's an, you know, it's an important issue that I don't feel like I have enough oversight.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, I guess so, but, but, you know, I'm not sure that the oversight you're looking for is necessarily going to be gleaned by the information you're asking for, because when you're looking at individual personnel records of kids and individual decisions made upon individual disciplinary matters, to try to sort of glean some sort of pattern from that. And if, and I'll tell you, and I could even see an argument where if we had a hint or a sniff or, or any, any feeling that there was an issue, then I could see going down that road and asking for the information to be compiled. But, you know, in the years that I've been on the board, and Maria's absolutely right, when, when there are major disciplinary issues, the board is appraised of it, not necessarily by student name, but by, you know, student ID number, so that we know what's going on. I just don't think there's any, anything there to, you know, respecting your desire to have the information. I just can't see the board putting the, you know, the amount of work, I don't think it's a simple tabulation. I think you'd have to go through every personnel file of every child over the past three years and pull it out and.
Wait, but can I just, you and Maria have said contradictory things then, because Maria's saying, we have it, it's easy. And you're saying it's burdensome, so I don't.
No, no, no. See, this is why I had asked you. So when something goes through superintendent's hearing and exceeds five days, legally, it has to go through superintendent's hearing. We are.
Legally, they have the right to go to a superintendent's hearing if they don't settle.
Correct. Okay. But the board is.
Well, that's not entirely true. So when we have, a principal suspension is, is up to five days.
Up to five, okay.
If we have the desire to go beyond that, a principal would recommend to the superintendent for that consideration. If I support that, it would lead to a superintendent's hearing process by which there's due process with a hearing officer who hears both sides of the party.
Right.
Within that process, there is that opportunity for parties to settle.
Right.
So certainly, have we gone down that path? We have. Have we gone to rulings by hearing officers? We have.
Right.
And I think maybe to Maria's point, those have been extreme situations. It's not a simple case of insubordination or a student that did something that was a, a more simplistic violation of the code of conduct. So it's a, it certainly is a part of the due process, right? But that's a part of the process, the district to administer discipline that would exceed five days.
But is the board apprised of every suspension that exceeds five days regardless of how far they go in that process?
I have apprised the board of every single situation that has hit that level, yes. And I only can speak to what's happened in two and a half years.
No, I understand.
And, and I absolutely have.
Um, wait, I guess in terms of looking for trends, I actually, a little bit different than John. I think some of the information would be actually useful from a board oversight perspective, just in terms of trends. Like if incidences of, of a similar kind seem to be spiking one year versus another, then I think from a kind of broad stroke's perspective, it would be interesting to see. Or if maybe five years ago, you know, the bulk of the suspensions were for whatever, X, and now they're for Y, I mean, I personally would be more interested just to see the nature of where these are coming from and are there trends going on? For, for me personally, not, you know, I kind of personally feel that it's not my role as a board member to look at the, you know, what the number of days was or the suspension was or the punishment was, but more just in terms of what the incidences are and what does that say about what's going on in the schools? And that, for me, that information would be useful. That said though, I, I always feel that, you know, it's, as a board, if someone wants the information and, you know, it doesn't, it's not going to take hours and hours to put together, I would support John.
Well, I think it will take hours.
I think that's, that's the exact issue though.
I mean, I'm in favor of doing this tabulation going forward because it sounds like a, it
sounds like the kind of data that we should have. But going backwards for three years or five years, it could take quite a long time, especially to gather the data in a way that makes it, that meets John's requirement, I think, you know, to just simply tabulate what the nature of the offense was is probably not as onerous, but.
I, I really just don't find it credible that it would take, if this stuff is actually in board weekly updates and those weekly updates exist for three years, that it would be that difficult to fish those out and put them in a, in an Excel file or whatever? And that that, how could that be taking hours?
But John, I don't think the information that we have in our, in our board docs is sufficient to, to do the, the analysis that you want to do.
What I'm, my analysis is.
Because it doesn't take into account.
May I ask, you know, I guess, we're still talking about different things and I don't think the request is clear. And because we're saying about things that have been listed in board docs, there's, you were talking, you're talking about what I have communicated to the board with respect to confidential communication with respect to students that have had serious infractions, the code of conduct, students that are being referred to the superintendent hearing process.
Yeah, right, right.
What that is not inclusive is a student that's been suspended for a day for insubordination or.
Right.
Students that got in a pushing match in gym class that a day or two.
But suppose, but suppose, so suppose we were to say only the suspensions of, that meet the five-day threshold.
Let me ask you a question. Those are, they're not part of board docs, they were always confidential memos that were sent to us on its own email. Is that, those memos easily accessible just to put them together and send it as one document? Is that, those memos easily accessible, just to put them together and send it as one document?
I wouldn't put it, you're looking for a synopsis of them, to break--
No, not a synopsis.
No, the breakdown of data.
John, John could do the synopsis, you just want the original memos.
I could, although I think, I would think it would be the kind of information that the school administration would want to be keeping, anyway, but--
I guess, the other question I have is struggling with an understanding, John, you used the word oversight, and, and what, you know, I guess, so what are we looking to, that oversight would provide what, I guess? So, what would make you feel better, or what are you looking for to satisfy what your question is with that? Because I'm not understanding oversight as a board member.
When I, I want to be able to, you know, well, I think these are serious events, and I think that the board, you know, should understand it. The way I would understand that stuff best is if I saw all of the basic information laid out in a consistent way. So, I'm not just getting a report of one student, this issue, and at this point, and another student, that issue, another point, and I have to remember, oh, you know, what was this one about, what was that one about, and just have it all laid out there in a very clean and very, very--
Can I just make a possible compromise?
Ters way, but--
So, I think the issue, at least for me, and I, I don't, can't speak for all five members of the board, is about the amount of work that is, that is involved in doing this, right? And so, none of us really know what that is. I was guessing it was a lot, you were guessing it couldn't be a lot. But why don't we, why can't the administration go back and do like three or four of them? And if three or four, going back and getting three or four, takes an hour, and there's 100 of them, then we can do a multiplication of that.
You know, I still come back, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Bill, but--
But let me just, so the idea is that we are actually making a fact-based decision, because in fact, John's request may not be that onerous to go back over three years. We don't know. We're guessing that it's a lot.
So, you know, this might be, you know--
Can I make a point, though? Can I make, and, because we have our attorney in the audience. Is this a true statement? When you go to a superintendent's hearing, there is an hearing officer there, isn't that binding, and we have no wiggle room with that? Or no?
You have the right to accept the general policy.
So, ultimately, okay, so ultimately, is that, it's my understanding, okay, that's what I thought. So, it could go down the path that eventually, the parents can come back to us, and, and come to us for a decision, which is why there's minimal information shared, basic information shared, because we need to be kept neutral, if it ever gets to that point. Is that correct?
You give it a notice of disapproval. Except for agreement, if there's a conclusion, you would, of the party, go back to the agency of the superintendent's hearing and ask them to follow up.
But I think that even, that just goes to show sort of my core point, which is, each of these decisions are made with respect to that child, with respect to the situation, and to try to tabulate it in a way that shows, I just don't think that ultimately, the work is going to provide anything useful to glean from the information, and therefore, shouldn't we have the administration focused on areas where we know there needs to be time spent, as opposed to tabulating this information when we don't think there's an issue? Again, if I thought there was an issue, or if anybody alleged an issue, then I think it would, it would make complete sense, but, you know, I mean, the only, the only way I've heard, I mean, I've heard it to be, to be, I mean, just to be fair, is that New York schools thought there was an issue with suspensions, and--
Well, that's not, that's not what motivates my issue.
No, I get it, I get it, but I just don't, and frankly, I got to tell you, if a lot of parents felt, you know, that, understood that a board was going to go and sort of reopen up issues into the disciplinary files of their kids, you know, as a parent of three, I wouldn't be all that happy about that. Because, you know, absent there being an issue that the board can act on, it does seem like, you know, it seems like busy--
I don't think John's requesting names.
I'm not looking at reopening--
But then, but that goes, that goes to my point. What are you going to get out of it, then?
I would like to understand how our policy on discipline, and this is a policy, with particular, you know, it's written into our policy, how it is being implemented, in summary form.
So, can I ask you a question? So--
I think administering policies, seeing that our policies are administered is part of our role.
Yeah, you've, I mean, but to be fair, you've also, the last year and a half, seen it live and in action.
Yes.
Let me ask you a question.
This is why I'm asking for this now.
So, the memos that we get, case by case, do you think that would satisfy you?
I would like them boiled down to the three facts that I've asked for, which is--
Okay, that's, so then I'm not--
Which is not, not a narrative on how the student was discovered doing whatever the student might have been doing and all that, but--
You want, you want grade, I'm hearing you, grade, nature of infraction consequence?
Yeah, grade, smoked marijuana, suspended for a month, or whatever it is, you know, for example.
Just in that analysis, does there, is there any other data that needs to be captured, though, that might be the extenuating circumstances of explaining the nature of why--
Well, maybe that could be smoked marijuana while--
Because of each--
While rescuing small children from the river, or something like that.
It could be the third offense.
That's multiple offenses, John.
Yeah, that's fine, but that's, that's fine, well, yeah, but that could be in the fraction, I don't know, but that's--
The complexity here--
Yeah, that's--
So, we can have discussion about what, if I may, the intent around the request, and what that's going to bring us, or bring you down the road. But the one complexity that I think we'll never be able to resolve is all the dynamics that sit in and around a disciplinary decision, because there, there's, you know, progressive discipline, kids that have particular disabilities. So, a child that may have a disability, his consequence for a similar infraction may look a little different than somebody else that didn't have a disability. There are a whole host of opportunities here for this to be misinterpreted, is what my concern is. So, as I've heard your requests, we're talking about those that would go to superintendent's level, and it's information that has been provided to the board already. So, let me just see what it takes to put it together, and then I'll communicate, and the board leadership will convey--
Yeah, and I hope you'll, you know, I hope we won't misinterpret it. I don't think anybody, you know, misunderstands the complexity of this, and the fact that you're dealing with individuals with individual situations.
And then be mindful when you look at the, this level of consequence as well, it's always, it's skewed to secondary students.
Yeah.
It's rare that you find yourself with an elementary child that's ever suspended. Rare.
Good thing.
Doesn't happen, but it's rare.
Right.
And then, the magnitude of the expenses are correlate with the infraction, which obviously, those that are going to get the bigger deals are going to be the older children. So, we'll, we'll take a look at it, I'll communicate with board leadership within the week.
Thank you.
So, our next meeting, should you choose to attend, it was nice to have more people tonight, is December 2 at 7:30, right here, in the campus presentation room. Happy Thanksgiving. We won't see you until then, till after Thanksgiving. And we are now moving into executive session for the purpose of discussing employment history of a particular person.